We've got to wait for the cameras on.
Motion, Derek.
Have a motion to the Council of Congress on that motion that we adjourned about a second. Second by Councilman Dean, where in discussion? Those in favor, see if you can follow by saying aye.
Aye.
Both saying, we are adjourned. We will go into the work section. Katie, do you have anything with this?
No, I sure don't.
Okay, thank you. Jason?
Oh.
Okay. We will move to discussion items, Court Street project review.
Yeah, so this is kinda hitting hot and heavy now. Over the summer, obviously, this is kind of something we were looking at doing and kinda waited just until we came up with a better plan. AT&T had moved a bunch of stuff that they've been in and done, if you've seen, kind of some of the very case I've told on the different things. And obviously, the drainage project hit, and then the weather hit, so it's really private and we didn't touch it because it would've just been a disaster. But, uh, so, we're kinda hitting, uh, heavy with the business owners and stuff along here because there's, it logistically is a pretty tough project. Primarily because, you know, the hours between these two businesses don't really sync up, you gotta draw a lot of drawings on here. You know, plus they're in, especially the, the, the more retail oriented business, you know, vendors, they're kinda more in a old storefront type setup, and so it just not conducive, you know, the loading areas are old school and the entrances, I mean, it just, you know, it's not, it's, it's tough with just the normal street. A lot of them having to be torn up. So, uh, we've been, we've met with them a couple of times, one time recently now, a couple of times before that, but trying to come up with the best plan to figure out how we can do this in phases and route people in and out. And this is, I don't mean to say final either, but it's just to give you an understanding, especially if you talk to them or talking, or running into different people, or, uh, you know, for your feedback, or whatever else, and then a couple of other things we're looking at doing. So again, just to orient yourself, here is, uh, Mill Street. Obviously, we finished Court on the other side, uh, two years ago. This would be to take it all the way past, uh, up, up past the big cut we did last, or, uh, last summer with the drainage project. And we're not gonna go all the way over, uh, to, uh... No? Yep? No? What's after Bell?
Chestnut.
Chestnut, yeah.
I'm noticing that green areas and vendor customer pickup, and it goes over some landscaping to that parking lot for, I believe it's now the forest shop. There's like a three foot or two foot drop.
Yeah, I'll get that to you, I'll get that to you in a second. So, okay, so we are, we're out there on site, this is again preliminary, so, uh, kinda what the idea would be is, and this actually, the screen line would probably come in on this side, now that we've talked about it, so again, this is Jesse's first attempt, then next at drawing what we talked about. And we've gotta talk to some of the landowners, I mean, there's still a lot of things need to happen, but I'm kinda letting you guys know about it. Basically, they would come in and out of here, and we would actually angle them across. This stuff, uh, would be kinda back in the spot, currently it's in this road here, so we're trying to create more parking, get this back to being parking again, working with, and Dennis in this situation, but, um, have them to come across here and just kinda building a little bit of ramp. And once you get up in here, it's not quite as much of a drop off, so then they can access this in here and park, and then they would be able to have a little cut out here so they can get out of here and you can see, in the first phase of the project, we'd only do this half of the street up on this part, but the whole street sidewalk, because again, we're trying to get to the drainage structures we gotta put in, this one's a bear cap. You know, get the handicap spots poured, kinda what we're talking about is this first portion where the handicap spots are, is do this all in concrete primarily because this is sort of a last resort waterway. You know, and if you'll notice, this gets to be kind of a mud bog and all that stuff, so I kinda was talking to the steward and the guy, like, you know, if we're in here and doing this with another, you know, a couple dozen square feet of concrete to go in here to get this just to flow right and look nice, and it'd still serve for our handicap spots that need to be hard surface. So, uh, so first phase, yeah, we had this hatch mark here, sidewalks, since they're extra wide, would always be partially open so that they would be able to get into their businesses. Again, if you remember Court Street, the guys did a really good job of always kinda keeping stuff open for the pedestrian traffic. And again, we would work with, uh, Bell, that's why if we could get this route established, again, we'll talk to the owners, we're gonna do that kinda stuff. We get this route established where they're coming across here, uh, we'll have signage up here, th- this will be closed so that people know, hey, access to vendors and the plum is here, you know, we'll get, or with Bell, we get really good signage up here so people know this is the way to go. They'll still be able to park on this end of it during that first phase, and again, we'll do some sign work here so that what I think Jesse called was a hammerhead turn, before we kinda, we kinda didn't work that off in the last, we did that big dig, and so people would kinda get trapped down here, but it works pretty good, they kinda have these hatch marked, old paint on roads so that people can park all the way up to this point, but then there's a place they can pull in and back out.
Is Ace Hardware objecting to their parking lot being used?
They have got this closed off now.
They've got it closed off, they've got the U-Haul trailers.
Yeah. So, again, yeah, that's, that's kinda the tough part with that, so, um, we'll see, you know, and that, that, that's just it. Some of that detail stuff might change a little bit, and we'll have access to that, but, um, so anyway, so that's kinda the first phase, vendor, you know, again, you could have room for warehousing and then access to this, uh, you know, the, the small engine business and that kinda stuff, the vendor zone. So this is kind of our first foray to that idea. Then phase two, uh, would be, um, would be to, uh, then tear up the second half of this street, kind of the same deal. Again, they would have access, kind of, you know, again, coming across here, the screen outline is not gonna be, it'll be coming across kind of here into this, you know, getting a good park on both sides, so again, we lose about road here, but if you kinda measure this out, it's about the same number of cars we'll gain here, but this goes back to how it was in the satellite image, you know, three or four years ago, we can work out a deal here. So, um, again, they come in here to park, do the business, and then go out here and finish up this little section so we can have a one way out, and then do this whole block right here all at once. So that's kinda the idea behind it, again, we're gonna, we haven't actually talked to Brett or Blake. We've talked about them about this concept, but we haven't actually shown them kind of on paper so that we're all on the same page with it, but this was our best workaround, and again, we got, we got some other property owners we gotta talk to still, but, yeah.
I'm wondering about the priority level of Court Street because I kinda feel for Brett because he's had construction around his business for
Sure.
years now, and
Yeah.
It seems like that would be a hard, hard thing for him to have to deal with.
Sure. Well, he's, he's involved with it, I mean, if you haven't done the front, you know, we only did that, that one year, I mean, the backside hopefully didn't hurt things too bad, and the parking lot came out nice, but, um, we're gonna have to do something, I mean, his, the big sell for Brett on this thing is the flooding going into his front door. He's tired of that.
Yeah.
So, this would fix that, unless it's just a ten inch disaster, you know, it's never gonna work there, but...
What kinda time would you be estimating for phase one to take and phase two to take?
I don't have any idea yet.
Because that would be the big thing to me is how long it's gonna be.
One, one thing we're talking about potentially is waiting until July to start a tawder, obviously, but, you know, hopefully run into the rain issues and... Because, you know, it's one of those things, once we can kinda get going, and it's decent, well, I mean, you saw that street port we did on, on South Street, I mean, they can go pretty quick, but, um, every time it rains, it sets you back a couple days, we gotta dry out. So, that was kinda one strategy we talked about, but, um, I guess that to your ears, and that's why we're being super proactive with this and then talking with Brett and all those guys, I mean, the biggest issue is that road is so torn up now because of that big project we had to do, so...
I'm also remembering the previous Court Street in front of Plum Creek where it used to be at, and that was a wash for us, way worse than what we got there.
Where was that at? Oh, now it's...
On the other side of Red Union.
Oh, over there, yeah, what we did, yeah, yeah. I don't know, yeah, I was here when we, well, I was here when we did that road, but yeah, you're right, but it's, yeah. Like I told Brett, and here's kinda the, it, it'll be really nice when it's done, I mean, you know, all the electrical will be underground, it'll gonna be, we'll be able to kinda continue those lights that, not necessarily those big concrete ones we had, but those black ones we did on Court Street, that it'll be a really nice scene. Uh, one thing we kinda talked about with them is, uh, the potential, and this is again, you know, we're, we're talking about, you know, because it's been a pretty big request, or big discussion for downtown, and starting to put in some street trees, you know, some small, I don't know if you've been to Ellsworth or, um, Concordia, you know, kind of the thing to do, just do small, small trees, and potentially, you know, kinda looking at some design around that, so, um, we've kinda been throwing out some ideas for, you know, for this area, and again, I know this seems fru- through, but it's what helps bring, you know, people like to spend, spend time downtown a little bit. You know, now's the time to do it if we're, if you're gonna look at something like that, so again, nothing's happening. Another thing we talked about with Brett potentially is, you know, if you take a stall out in the front, you know, and you can make a sidewalk around around it, he's got some outdoor seating for, for eating if, if he wants, and again, it's just, you wanna know, skin off our back as far as extra ops or anything, but if we're gonna do something like this, you know, we're kinda throwing this out of two, then this is the time to, to, to engineer that in there, and it really has no impact on traffic or anything like that, but, um, you know, it might be something, again, if he's looking to grow his business or do different things, that, um, would probably be pretty popular, but if he doesn't want it, we'll do it, but...
Is he kind of a dead waiter? In that kitchen?
Uh, I don't think so.
Took me a second.
That's what you're talking about.
Dumb waiter?
Dead waiter, dumb waiter.
Okay.
Because I just wondered if
Yeah.
If there would be any way that you could maybe change that eating room around downstairs for the restaurant part if you had that dumb waiter.
Yeah. Yeah, um...
Because, I mean, there's a lot of elderly people.
For sure.
You know?
Well, that's kinda what we talked about with this, was really trying, you know, for this, it's, that's why we really, the big goal of this, again, this is a bad decision because right now this is not here, so only, definitely a strip of car can park here. So the goal is, again, to work out a deal with the joint property owners to build, pile this stuff up here again, and so your parking is about the same as it was, they're taking away.
Is that more appropriate?
Then a solution. And, and, and putting cars here, uh, and then this is always, you know, trying to have a smooth act, like you said, and the big, the big goal's gonna be signage that people know where to go, um, but, yeah.
It's gnarly for a while, but anybody who's been in downtown, so I mean, they went through those three years.
See, the thing with downtown, they would, would make it one way and just do one half of the street and then flip it to the other half of the street. Right, I don't think we need to do that, that's the difference.
They were huge work around it.
Well, I'm guessing you and me did the downtown project, what, fifteen years ago, it's probably a lot more torn up than this. You know, so we're, we're really trying to bait it up and make sure the sidewalk access, I think, the thing we can really improve from the last time we did Court is better side, even the drain side is better signage to direct so they know where to go, you know, and making it super clear and accessible, but...
I'm just curious, was there any financial, uh, mitigation or anything given to the businesses downtown when that construction was done for them?
Mill Street?
Yeah. I just, I didn't know.
That was before my time, but not that I ever stayed in America.
I know sometimes I've heard that too, when the city does major construction that causes loss of business, they might do some mitigation with taxes or something. I just didn't know if we'd done that in the past or not, so...
So, am I hearing this right, that little parking area there that belongs to the city on the south side?
Here, yeah.
That's going away in the end?
No, it's gonna be there.
So this is just temporary during construction?
It'll be kind of our staging area, yep. So when it's all said and done, it'll still be there, um, and what will happen is it'll actually create a hard surface, like, um, handicap parking area, um, and it would actually hard surface that whole first third, I think, just because the drainage issues are also there anyways. But yeah, it'll still be there when it's done.
During construction, that will be gone, so this, but after construction, it will be...
That's why we're trying to gain this parking over here, so we can use this as our staging, and then when we're all said and done, that parking will be the same except for some of the auto street, which there is, I mean, people park over, they'll, they'll, they'll be fine, you know, the auto street is not that.
How much, how many, how much parking are you looking at down there south of Court, there, right in there?
Uh, when we're all said and done, Ken?
No.
Oh, sorry.
During construction?
Um, I don't think any.
Okay.
During construction, any, this'll be, that way we can queue as much off of the street as we can, this'll be where we, you know, materials and
Oh, wow.
Yeah, this'll be, that's why, that's why we're trying to get this to be upsized again. If we can get this to be bigger, then really, we're, we've got about the same number of cars here that we do here, if we can get this back, you know, if we can do this again, right now, this, this, all this material here is all part of these cars and... But yeah, basically, these pipes are all sit down here, so there's only one road parking, so if we can get that deal back, we can get this back up here, then we'll basically, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Yeah.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, you know, we gotta gain that back.
You, you really are gonna have to talk to, about moving those U-Hauls though, because I've seen people almost hit each other now that they can't go straight. I know, I'm just saying, we might need to have some discussion with business owners just if we can get something figured out.
When things just change or... Yeah.
Because it's been a little rough for people there.
The drainage, that road is cute.
It'll be painful for some for a while.
That's kinda, kinda, you know, in, in my standpoint with Brett, you know, the impact, I mean, that's kinda why we're starting super, like, trying to figure out the best way that we can do this. But, yeah, honestly, it'll be awesome, and if you go there now, you can see all the poles and light poles and stuff, if that's, that'll be gone. It's gonna be really nice for that area.
Perhaps for maybe people that are able to use the stairs, if you get advertised, park in the back, walk in the back, and just go up the stairs.
Get a free beer.
And then you can park right next to the building.
Yeah. Yeah, and then, you know, yeah, hopefully driven this off street project by now and seeing the grass coming in, you know, the way that parking off of that, you know, you can get all parking back there and sit there nevertheless, but again, we've staged back there for the last two years, so...
Problem is, the longer you wait, I'm hoping we don't have a rough winter because...
Light City Council, for Mandy, would you take a roll call, please?
Kent Miller?
Present.
Louis Nolan? Tony Dean?
Yes.
Matt Hotty?
Here.
Lloyd Latrell?
Present.
Andrew Graylock?
Present.
Thank you, I'll point out, we have a revised agenda this evening under formal actions, E, the sewer, farm ground lease agreement. If you would, uh, stand with me for the introduction and, uh, for the briefing. Heavenly Father, thank you for this wonderful weather that we're having for our community to sow their next crop and harvest their current crops, and, and, and thank you for the success that our youth is enjoying this fall and, and all the sports, and be with them on their travels, and keep them and their parents, they, and continue all the blessings that you bestow on our community in your name with prayer, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Andrew, do you have anything?
Not this time, thank you.
Kent?
The grass up at the ball, it sure looks nice. I've not heard of any of that.
Good. Great improvement. Matt? Lloyd?
Um, thank you.
Tony? Okay. Katie, do you have anything with this?
Thank you.
Jason, we'll turn it over to you.
Um, yeah, we have, uh, tomorrow at noon, here at Municipal Building, we'll have our kickoff census complete count committee meeting. Um, again, it's how the census is doing on the rural grassroots level to make sure that we get a good response, um, from residents in our area. For the census, because really, it, it means a lot in terms of a lot of dollars, thousand dollars and stuff that trickles down. Uh, I guess, kinda, so I put the math to it, it's like two thousand one person per year, and it's what each person counted as work to your area, so... Um, and so, especially since this year's gonna be kinda the first transition to where there, you're gonna basically get your census form electronically. And so, have a link for you to go and fill it out, and, and obviously, if that doesn't happen, and they'll come, they'll send you a paper one, and that doesn't happen, they'll knock on your door, and that's kinda the process, so the more education this, with this complete count committee you'll do, is it's a bunch of area leaders, or, you know, tough to count areas, you know, maybe a nursing home, make sure we get that all counted, and, you know, those, those directors and stuff will be at this meeting, and we have some other small towns in the area, so we're just kinda trying to be the leader with it, so, uh, so maybe from the census here tomorrow to help kinda train us, although this session will be tomorrow, of, you know, what to say, how to say it, and, and how we can get the word out. Um, and so it'll be tomorrow at noon, and we have about, you know, maybe fifteen to twenty area people that are kinda in those strategic positions, you know, like, very first at the college, or here with the hospital, all those types of things, so, should be good. Uh, the water treatment and cultural review for the water pipeline, it's kinda in the process right now, so kinda doing some initial legwork. Be a lot of people on the ground next week to really do some, um, digging along the route, so, um, we'll have a lot more indication of what's out there, and I'm sure there'll be a few little things, but the, it should go hopefully pretty smoothly, but again, this is kinda toe dip, and it'll be a lot clearer as far as the actual route we'll end up being, and then we can get more serious with that, so... Um, so yeah, that kinda just gets me to that, the time under, you just kinda, wanna kinda keep this top of your guys in mind, people are asking questions now, and things are getting more and more active. We get a lot of good correspondence, Susan's helped us a little bit with, uh, KHE, um, back and forth with getting, you know, kind of our application finalized, all the things we need to get approved, you know, sooner we get that in, the sooner we can be closer to the top of the list for, for available funds, so... So, uh, that's going really well, I'm, I'm CC to a lot of those emails now, so, um, we get a lot of good responses on, uh, waste from summer review, and, you know, degradation, and, and, I mean, they're even looking at the old, uh, pilot study that we did, and just kind of all that stuff, so... Again, just, just kinda keep that going, the cultural review was a big part of this, and then, um, hopefully, we'll kinda get to starting down, down some of these dollars and, and kind of move on to the design and potential engineering, and try to get it out for bid and go from there, so... Another big reminder again, is the election on November fifth, so if you, uh, um, obviously, we have one person that has, uh, their signatures, but obviously, just keep reaching out to anybody that's interested in running, encouraging them to get their, um, signatures or whatever we're gonna do, and if you have a solid council accreditation for areas, that's just kinda a reminder, yeah.
Wouldn't it be a good time on the calendar to address the possibly changing signature rule?
Really, anytime as far as, it'd probably be the chart order, so...
We obviously, we don't like to front to the election, I mean, it's too late to change ballots right now, I mean, for the next election.
Yeah, sometime on the plan next year.
Yeah, and it might be the time to address the wars, and who knows, you know what I mean? Yeah.
At the moment, it's just gonna have to be a write-in ballot, correct?
That would be correct, yep, that, that would be...
Or whatever, but I mean, it will be a write-in ballot.
Yes. Except for, for, for Andrew, Andrew potentially could be on it.
Yeah, because ours, there's two seats in our ward, and there's two seats there, but no one's running officially.
Correct.
And that ward is a, is a problem, yeah.
Anyways, that's, yeah, we'll get some, like, there's been some Facebook activity and stuff, so, um, West Main Street, West Main Street Rehab, if you see that, if you drive out there, you'll see a lot of curb work and, um, kinda, really been sped up, it'd be transportation, uh, kinda little different curb device, I guess is the best way to put it, not really machine, it's pretty, pretty slick little device that just has a drum shaped and the, the relief is a curb shape, and so it just spins, you just pull it along and it just runs it up super slick and fast, so, um, they're getting really fast, but I think they did a hundred seventy feet the other day at about forty-five minutes, so it's, it's pretty good, and upstairs, a lot of stuff, stuff as hard as the forming, getting the older core now, but their goal is try to get that south side, for the most part, done, so the next spring, we can kinda have, have, that, that, that overlay thing, we're gonna try to do this spring, but just didn't, we didn't actually have access to the over material in the county, it's gonna need to get dried out, so it's just, just terrible here for road type stuff, but, uh, hit our next spring on that. Uh, and then the last thing, it's helping churches, just getting, remember, we're gonna kinda keep talking about that, working on that, I told you, you know, I got, uh, well, my idea of the schedule is just wait until the first of January, and I probably just, that'll give us a little bit of history of the current plan that we could access potentially, and, and so I already talked to, um, the gentleman that does stuff, uh, with school and the college, and just kinda, you know, because they do some partial self-londage to help us educate on that, to see if that's the route that we'd wanna go, so I know the council, they kinda wanna talk about that, so...
As we get more into that, is it possible we can do a dedicated session or a work session on that?
Yeah.
Outside of our regular, I'm just trying to...
That's probably a good idea, and I think I qualified this, I basically ended the first year, no one figured out what's the best strategy, so, yeah. So that's all I got from there, and Heather is with family tonight, because her grandmother's ninety-ninth birthday, so I don't have a big problem with that.
On the election, on the census?
Yeah.
Last time I was involved, a census person came around to my house and asked me a question, so, is that still gonna be the process this time?
Uh, no, so... Well, so the process before was a mail-in form, if you didn't get that filled out, then they would usually, out of the mail-in, something else, a reminder, but then they would come to your house, kinda like you were saying, that's the kind of the last thing you would do. Exactly, that happens, and that's what this purpose of this committee is for, to educate people, to try to eliminate, you know, get as best, or as many as we can front, but now the process is gonna be, the first contact is gonna be electronically.
An email to?
Yep, email.
Katie doesn't have an email.
Well, exactly, and so then that's why they're still gonna have...
Quite a few around.
Exactly, and so that's why they're still gonna do, you know, that'll be, instead of the big mailing, a big form, they'll do that, if not, then they'll do a different, you know, they'll eventually come in, that whole process.
Hopefully, a few will respond to the first one.
Yeah, the fewer they have to mail, the better.
The less you have to get.
Absolutely, so yeah, so, then mailing, and then doorknob, so, same, they'll get ya no matter what, but, yeah.
So they've made contact with all the major players here, right?
Yeah, I did, yes, and so they, they said, yeah, hey, here's what they usually do, and they kinda are helping us with this, an idea, with the committee, so yeah, I reached out, I'll at least have a R S A P for the meeting tomorrow at noon, and then we've got, you know, like, one elder city car's coming, I mean, so I was trying to get kinda...
Under and...
Under, yeah, yeah, we've reached out, now whether they cover or not, we'll see, but a lot of them require R S A Ps, so, um, so, yeah, um...
And then the family history of genealogy, and I appreciate the work that the census people have done.
It is really useful, yeah.
Work, and when they don't, then it's kinda a big hole, it's, it's good to have.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, the county's been inviting, yeah, so we've got quite a few players involved in it, so, yeah. Yeah, it's coming up, it's coming up really quick.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda would be the consent agenda, and your campaign motion to pass it in this entirety. Removed by Councilman Ali, the recruit, the consent agenda this entirety by second. Second by Councilman Latrell, any discussion? Those in favor, see if you can follow by saying aye.
Aye.
Both saying, and the motion carries. Next item on the agenda this evening is, uh, Resolution Twenty-Nineteen, uh, Twenty-three, the safe routes to school to the application, any questions for stuff?
Yeah, I have more information to, um, um, obviously, this is, you know, it's, let you have at these, of course, we gotta have some initial ideas, but kinda throw it all together now to meet the deadline. So again, this is kind of, I mean, you wanna hit a half, I'm just off the memory. This is trying, this is kind of the route, and so, um, just for, uh, orientation, here's Percy, here's Eighth Street, so we've kinda two different panels here to get it all on one sheet. Um, again, what we've got is it kinda going for the first half until we get to at least Bell on both sides of the, of the road, is kinda the plan. Just from a, man, see, even if I want to get inside, they'll all be crossed, especially once, if we get the application approved, you know, we're only gonna do so much work on this, is, there's gonna have to be some switchbacks, different things, because of the, the, the different orientations and everything. And then, and it would extend past, uh, Eighth Street, at least on the south side a little bit, um, just with that sort of sidewalk, actually, I, I expect to manage the city program, for example, and so we'd connect to that at least, and kinda the thought being, at least, it's kids, a little bit, way for the busier intersection, they wanna disperse down south till we get, you know, hopefully someday we'll get sidewalk built east, you know, and can push them off a little further, but...
How are, yeah, how are they gonna do that right there across the curve from your place on Hyman's, or Hyman's?
That's a, that's a really big question, Ken, we don't really have a, an exact solution for it, it'll probably, yeah, it'll probably have to be some sort of retaining wall or something, kinda like she's got on the, on the west side, like, uh, breathing that, or, kind of look it up around her tree, yeah, it does, you know, we'll walk, I mean, we'll get it figured out, but it's not, I don't have it right here.
Well, I was just curious.
Yeah, and, and those trees are...
Well, it can come out.
They're kinda, yeah, they're kinda not the best variety, and obviously, it'll mean something, yeah, we'll get it figured out, and it'll be good when it's done, but... Uh, the big thing is, it's gonna be a big improvement, a budget in this for, for the Bell Street, obviously, we're gonna be crossing it now, we really don't have any really big crosswalk upgrades as part of it, besides what's already there with this, since we're gonna have actually a route for it to go to after that, uh, we wanna put a little, you know, you can push the button and it flash, you know, kind of more of a really controlled type crosswalk there, because that is, it's just a nightmare right there, it's scary in the morning, and I cringe all the time when I go through there. Uh, once it gets passed, um, up here, up here's, you know, here's the Methodist church, it'll then stay just on the north side, there's just challenges, there's just, you can't overcome them with the way that some of these buildings were, I'm guessing, whitest four lanes at some point in the seventies or eighties, and, and just, the lane is right there, uh, yeah, you can see that one, and there's like one other one right here, so, it'll stay on that north side, um, and basically, we're gonna get to this corner, and get them laced across, and then south, because there is a little bit of sidewalk, there's a sidewalk that kinda starts back up about a half a block, kinda just past Subway, so we'll get them there, and I know the comments were made last time, and that's kinda where, you know, we'll see where this is at at the city, just, you know, filling the rest of it or how we wanna do it, but, um, that, that would be the extent of what the safe routes to school application would be. The, uh, kinda from a timing standpoint, you know, again, we'll get this in here, hopefully... Um, the, uh, kind of from a timing standpoint, you know, again, we'll get this in here, hopefully we'll get approval into December, first part of twenty twenty. Um, I don't think it would probably try to go off a bid until twenty-one, you know, spring twenty-one-ish, sure they're about kind of saying, you know, kind of, you're gonna have to get timeframe takes, we're kind of, we're kind of getting good at it now. So it probably really wouldn't be funded till, you know, really late twenty-one or twenty-two is kind of what I'm guessing on that. And again, it's, it's kind of the same, um, let me get my, there you go. Um, kind of the same, same deal with this thing. And again, since you're crossing so many properties, there's a lot, there's a lot to this, this is the top one. Uh, but again, it's falling within the same financial guidelines as, as the, uh, the other one, where they really participated in the construction cost. Obviously, there's some, there's, you know, design, construction, during that kind of stuff, which tends to come in cheaper, but this is kind of their worst case, uh, thing with this, because this one's gonna be a little more intense. And so in the past, I guess, I think everyone knows, I was, like I said, it might be a hundred twenty or a hundred thirty, but it's kind of, we'd be on the hook for about a hundred and fifty of the projects. Um, but the total project costs about five hundred and some thousand dollars to get that all, uh, done up, but, um, yeah, so that, again, that would take place in that twenty, I'm guessing about that twenty-two, uh, realm, try to do that.
Starts at Percy and goes west to the hospital?
To Independence.
To Independence, oh, way to Independence.
Yep, and it's trying to really connect what we're gonna be doing here this spring is the Bell Street coming out from the school and that big gnarly crosswalk right there with all the kids. So it's really trying to kind of give us a middle route, and we'll have the north and the south ends pretty well done after this next phase. And even the one we've already got awarded, you know, that will be coming in another year, uh, but this one will really kind of take care of that middle corridor.
And if this one stops at Independence for now?
For now, and hopefully then, and the plan then is eventually, hopefully it'll extend on Eighth, east and west for, you know, but.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, this is, you drive that.
You're right, there is a lot of.
And there's a lot of, and there is a lot of foot traffic on it, even without school. I mean, there really is, it's kind of a, a lot of people, I think just, people walk to work, people walk to shop, I mean, they just don't have access to a car, it's kind of, I guess you could see it because I live right there, so it's kind of surprising how many people use that area, so.
So, it's been moved by Councilman Miller, but we approve a resolution twenty nineteen twenty-three, saver routes to school two D application. Second by Councilman Ablin, I agree on, uh, anyway, uh, any further comment? Those in favor?
I'm, that screen is gonna tear it up even more potentially if we do, and it's gonna be pretty bad in the spring if nothing, you know, happens, what else?
Yeah.
Short-term pain, long-term gain, right?
It's kind of a point, yeah, yeah.
I think the covering body is to sign the amendment to the, uh.
Yes.
Amendment to the budget, so I need everybody's signature. So then there's two copies.
Revised, yeah, they'll go back to the state and replace it.
Did you read it, Tony?
Oh, that's a two seven.
Did he make small or make more?
Did you talk to?
You heard twice here.
How are they keeping this down exposed?
Yeah.
That's what Steve said.
Yeah, yeah, if you, yeah, if you're driven by, uh, a Chevrolet, you would do a G M C dealership, they're taking all the ten off, it's gonna stay off.
It's staying off.
Yeah.
It's getting pretty off.
The old ones, huh?
Yeah, that's, that's pretty cool. Old school. They've really done, they've really done a number on that building.
I thought you signed toys and said, "Smile."
Yeah, it's been, it's kind of super cool. Yeah, I think it's been like that, it's been tinned up like that since the early seventies or seventies, probably maybe earlier than that, sixties, I'm not sure. Steve, do you remember?
I know, it's been a long, long time.
Yeah, because that ten looks like more modern ten, but you look at it, it's actually, I mean, it's, that's all the stuff, you know, it's.
How much have they removed from it?
I'd say about a third of it, a half, that's all gone now, okay.
Pretty well, oh, no.
It's on, halfway.
I was surprised by the way they were ripping it off, you know, yeah, but, so, second point, crowding and stuff on them, well, walks look good yet.
Yeah, they should look like they covered it up, probably because back then it was to make it look more modern, I suppose, you know, yeah. But that's why I was afraid they're gonna tear it off and find out why they covered it up.
They covered it up, it's just a mess, you know, but.
They probably helped preserve it, actually.
You'll be happy when he's lost, though.
You what?
They said, "You'll be happy my auntie's lost tonight."
Oh, did they?
The enemy of Miami is my friend.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's it, we'll, um, and is there anything else coming up?
Is there anything else coming up, you mean, that?
Uh.
So, what you, you talked a lot about, man.
Thing one.
I figured you'd know.
No.
Well, those, could be pretty good themes, but I don't think they're quite as tough right now.
They're down right now, Sacred Heart is, anyway.
Never know, play your game.
Yep, that's right.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those, motion carries. We'll move on to this evening to, uh, formal actions. Your first item is the Solomon Valley Transportation fiscal year two thousand twenty-one support. This is our, our little three H mail.
Yeah, that's what this is, yeah, we're a little behind on, they call me for the letters for them, yeah, I actually talked about that this year, so, but yeah, it's not much change from last year, but still.
It's been approved by Councilman Ablin, we have approved the Solomon Valley Transportation two thousand twenty-one support. Second by Councilman Ali, any discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say, motion carries. Next item is the power plant turbo repair.
Um, yeah, so this was kind of a, you know, like jump on this same old plane. Thankfully, it's on install, it's working, actually, they're working until about ten-thirty tonight, because Rice, and like, I never know how many sense of this, but this Rice testing, what is it, Lloyd Rice DeShafter, he always called this, something, yeah, I don't.
Yeah, that's it.
I'm not sure, yeah, because the, the German pronunciation or what it is, but I, I don't know what Manny's saying, but it's, it's Rice, M A C T, that's the, I guess. But then they showed up today, of course, after all the touching, there, but it wasn't working very good, so they're, they're gonna have to go long into the night now to get caught back up. It's kind of a real pain to get, uh, K H E to move around, I mean, they were like, we asked, well, essentially, well, how do we know that you actually have a fault with your turbo? And we're like, well, it's in the shot, you know what I mean, it's just like, they were like, that's, we're just not user friendly, as we found out a lot, so. Um, honestly, in the end, I think we gotta, you know, as, except, these are huge dollars and, and, um, but in the end, I think we gotta get a deal primarily because they tried to fix the case and it didn't hold and didn't work. And they had a spare casing set, set around, we're like, well, it's gonna cost more, or like, well, it's gonna be a problem, we're already kind of stretching it right now, and so they just kind of just gave us a deal on it, you know, and, you know, we've done a lot of work with them over the years, so. Um, but yeah, it's, it's on there and it's working, so if anybody wants to go afterwards and listen to some engines run for a couple hours, we can go after the council meeting and.
What's good?
Yeah, Lloyd's heard him, if anyone else is here, we're pretty cool, but, um, so, so anyway, you know, I guess, uh, I'll have to go back to my banger and figure out what we used to call this, but I, I always think it's, you guys are kind of validating that you support my decision to do this. So when the honor is looking at it, you have some sort of backup to it, but.
So, uh.
Second.
Ain't even out of the garage.
Okay, nobody, nobody vote, yeah.
You know, even though I suggested it.
Let's, let's, let's think about it.
Yeah, I think we should table.
Yeah. Motion made by Councilman Greavon, that we approve the power plant turbo repair, second by Councilman Miller, any discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the revised twenty twenty budget.
Yeah, this was, uh, um, you know, thankfully, again, we get, there's a new gal that's in the budget office, she's pretty sharp, she was, she was at the budget meeting, um, or the training we go to and then walks us through it. And she said, yeah, she checks them through and makes sure that they're meeting the lid guideline and, and basically in the, the calculation sheet, uh, I think it's more for, I can't remember what, what was going into it, the calculation of like.
Or is the change?
Yeah, of other property, yeah, it wasn't your traditional, you know, like maybe, uh, your campers and that kind of stuff, I can't remember exactly. But basically, we inputed along the number of that calculation sheet that says here's what your lid can go to. And so, um, you see that now and, and obviously, you know, it wasn't enough to be a big red flag either, so, um, basically what we're, uh, what they just recommended, you know, it's basically no harm, no foul at this point, um, to where, I'll get the right thing pulled up here. Sorry.
You said it worked out, it's like twenty-one thousand dollars at the Warren, I guess what it was.
Right, yeah, it's gonna be, basically it lowers the taxes, uh, a little bit on that, um, we get to that sheet, sorry. And so, yeah, they just want us to, uh, just approve the revised budget, we don't have to do any sort of hearing or anything like that, because it goes down, uh, it's in the taxpayer's favor. Um, so basically, all we did was we just lowered this levy, the general fund levy, a little bit to meet that guideline, um, so I think, sorry, I don't know what. Go ahead, I'm gonna say.
Or just lower our middle levy, solve the next two.
Absolutely, yeah, they gave, they gave the original budget, we had one point six four nine million dollars of adler, and this is one point six two seven, so that.
Make note of that.
Yeah, taxes are going down, so it's, uh, yeah, and so, um, yeah.
Are they really, I mean, did not go up with the original numbers?
Yeah, 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 it's hard to know, but, um. Yeah, so, and again, kind of the hope, the hope of the North Campus thing, Manny and I can't talk about, but, you know, she, you know, we kind of, hey, we'll, we'll rob it from there because hopefully that gets, um, you know, we can move on from that, that, that deal and help our budget anyway. So, um, so yeah, we'll get refiled and be right on the tax statements that go out and, you know, they'll be, any of the wise, it'll just look even better than we, I think we did before, so. Uh, it puts our average down to about that two percent angle we've been dealing with last couple years, so we give it a pretty flat, so.
So, move by Councilman Greavon, that we approve the revised twenty twenty budget, I'm second, second by Councilman Ablin, any discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the appointment, or reappointments on the housing board of, uh, Nilla Newell and Mary Maxwell.
Lila, is Lila been on your board, or is this her first time?
I think. Yeah, she's been on, they've both been on there for a while.
Mary has been on there a lot.
And basically we have right now, uh, who's the guy stepping down? Good, good. Somebody on there stepping down, but they haven't found a reappointment for, so then we, so moved, yeah.
So, move by Councilman Miller, that we approve the appointment to the housing board, board of, uh, Lila Miller and Mary Maxwell, I'll second.
Say.
Second, Councilman Greavon, any discussion?
I'm just thankful we have people willing to step up and do this stuff all the time, so.
So true. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say.
I thought you'd ask her for me, Lila's last name?
Newell.
Newell, yeah, Norm Newell.
Yes, right.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the sewer farm ground lease agreement addendum.
Aye, did they vote? Okay. Yeah, 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 it's getting so, so smooth right now.
Those through the video tape.
Yeah. Um, all right. Oh, here you go. Um, so basically, uh, um, Joe Keaton, who has, uh, been leasing that ground, you know, entered in that too, but then this spring, um, kind of been asking me about potentially putting some, some cattle on that, just for being kind of temporary basis. Uh, so we kind of talked through, Katie and I did, uh, what's the best process, and she just recommended kind of just a simple addendum, if, if so chose, to the farm lease agreement. And I kind of just talked to him about some, just some stipulations in there to make sure it was, um, it was really the only biggest piece of ag ground in City Limb, it's kind of a thing, so it's, uh, it'd be a maximum of, uh, two months. You know, basically, he said they, they feed all of it and they rip through it pretty fast, but it probably really be a month, but, uh, two months, he said a hundred, a hundred fifty head, so it's a one seventy-five. And then he would keep it, he'd be a fence on, of course, he lives right across the street, so he does own a land right across the street, which is the same orientation to town as this one. And, uh, he, I just had to, you know, kind of keep on the back two-thirds of the property, you know, away from, um, you know, the neat water and the, I guess they actually sneak in there and they slaughter their own cow or something, but, uh. And then I said, yeah, that kind of, you know, I need trouble, trouble.
And slide, I'm like.
Yeah, dancing. Yeah, sorry. He geeked it up. What's that?
Did they have to till that under?
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, who go, yeah, no. That'll just be on top, I guess, but, I, yeah, so, um, he's actually gonna be doing that, um, and Jim hired him, you know, our, you have that old tractor, it's just kind of a rinky-dink operations, he's got a truck-based spreader, so he's gonna actually do that for us. And, uh, for the, for the cake that we produce from the sewer plant, so it's, it's working out really good out there, uh, had a really good crop on it and taking good care of it, so.
And if I read it correctly, there's no additional liability to the city whatsoever, it's.
No, I mean, that, her rough well was in our old agreement, but I add, I tried to add to it because, I mean, you're adding obviously cattle and then like your fence and, so I wanted to kind of.
Just making the parent row smaller.
Yeah, so I wanted to kind of increase that one bit, just a little bit, but you got more activity out there, so, no liability for us, he's, he's identified in the city there, so.
So, it's been moved by Councilman Greavon, that we approve the sewer farm ground lease agreement addendum, I'll second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Miller, any discussion?
That's not gonna affect our walking trailer bike.
I've talked to him about that, so we'll, we'll have to, you know, when that's eventually, you know, we'll have to make sure he keeps them off of that part two, you know what I mean? But yeah, yeah, I already talked, I actually talked to him about two weeks ago and he was starting to take the corn off and we're gonna go out there, your reason, or actually, tomorrow afternoon, stake it out where we're gonna put the trail and he can, then he kind of knows eventually where it's gonna be, so, yeah.
I'm looking at this here, I'm, you know, is there, if there's a tree limb hanging out there, he ain't allowed to touch it.
Yeah, that comes from the old agreement, but.
You know, ultimately, if it's out there for this equipment, then he ain't allowed to touch it, he's gotta call the city.
He cannot touch it.
Okay.
That comes from some prior tenants issues, so that's in.
I think, yeah, probably that's more just, because we had an issue where they were like, he and Paul Money out there.
Okay.
So, yeah, I think, like, if he trends on, we probably won't know about it, you know, but.
Well, we don't want to.
I'll bet there's places, one, two, three, four, oh, we're missing a branch.
Paul Money used an axe, not a goose.
Yeah, it's more of something, twenty trees are gone. Yeah, yeah, that's a good catch, though.
That was prior to you, though, Jason.
Yeah, I know.
You're, you're scared, but, but you still have a little.
There's a kid there, yeah.
Well, yeah, I lost track.
Okay.
I'm sorry, the Paul Money thing here, if those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is, uh, executive sessions for preliminary.
There's a.
I'm sorry.
You're all right.
Okay, the olive lights, car closure on October twenty-third.
So true.
It's been moved by Councilman, that we approve the olive lights, park closures on October twenty-third.
Maybe seven days earlier than they're bringing that, so.
Go ahead and second on that, like, second by Councilman Miller, opposed in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say, okay, now we'll go.
Kind of re. Do we have to actually?
I'll be sure.
County, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm fine with what, the executive session for preliminary discussion of acquisition of real estate, presented to K S A seventy-five four-three nineteen B six. The open meeting will resume at the time designated by council, uh, for ten minutes to include the state managers, the attorney, and the governor.
So.
We'll go up second, second by Councilman Ablin, any discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say, motion carries, we'll go into closed session for ten minutes.